Good.
That's the S?
Yes.
Well, fantastic. All right, welcome. Good afternoon and welcome to everyone. Thank you. Today, we're having a special meeting of the Fairfield Traffic Authority. And at this moment, I'd like to ask everyone to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. And I'd like to ask Anthony Calgries to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The flag of the United States of America. The Republic which stands. Invincible with liberty and justice.
Thank you. Okay. Okay, good afternoon and welcome to everyone who is here and participating in our meeting today. We have a few things to do today. We'll get through the agenda pretty quickly. Mega has a lot to share with us online, so I'll turn things over to her. Capable means quite shortly here. Before we move ahead, we do have a little housekeeping that we want to double check on and to make sure that we're good to go with the town clerk's office and FOI regulations and things of that nature. So according to our agenda, if you've had a chance to look at it, what we are going to do under item number three is to hear, consider and approve of officers of this commission for the coming year. I know we talked about this at our last meeting. But in order to finalize things with the town clerk, we need to go through that process one more time as part of this agenda. All right. So the floor is open for nominations for Chairman of the committee.
So anything today's? I'll make a motion. Chair to be. You Frank? Kevin, sorry, Kevin, sorry.
Do we have any other nominations? All right, hearing none, nominations are closed. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, that motion carries. Thank you. It is a privilege and an honor to be with you guys and to be the chairman of this committee. I really do appreciate your, your support. All right, so the floor now is open for nominations for Vice Chairman of this commission. Do we have any nominations? Yes, ma'am.
Mega Jane? Vice Chairman?
Is there a second? Second by the chief. Any other nominations? Hearing none, nominations are therefore closed. All of those in favor? Aye, opposed, abstentions, motions carry. Congratulations. It'll be a pleasure working with you. All right. You might regret that, but congratulations for now.
Everything on you.
And lastly, we have to nominate not a recording secretary, but a secretary of the board. Chief?
I'll make a motion. Emily? Nomination.
Do we have a second? All right, any other nominations for Secretary of the FTA? Hearing none, nominations are closed. All in favor? Aye, opposed, abstentions, congratulations. All right. All right, Emilyne is it.
Imagine if every meeting went like this.
Yes, right, okay. Item number four is to hear and consider our 2025 meeting schedule. We did talk about this last week as well, but we do want to take a formal vote on it at this meeting. I know we, we agreed upon, I think it's the third Thursday. Mega has posted those dates up on the agenda website. I hope you found a chance to look at them, review them. And I wanted to put that in front of you folks for consideration amendments and or approval. Yes, ma'am.
I'll make a motion to approve the 2025 meeting schedule.
Thank you, Emilyne. Is there a second? I'll second that. All those in favor? Aye, opposed, abstention. Okay, item number four carries. Our schedule is affirmed. It is posted. Thank you, Mega, for doing that. We are good to go with that type of housekeeping administrative type stuff unless anybody else.
Something, sorry, as the reporting secretary, I usually never get involved in anything, but is it possible to do a roll call at the beginning? Until I get familiar with everyone's faces.
I don't know if I have a listing of all the members in front of me.
Well, okay.
Are you okay for now? You mean like going forward or for now? Why don't we go around the room again?
That's what I was gonna say.
Reduce ourselves. How about that? That'll make it easier for everyone because I'm not the greatest with.
And also because I don't know if anyone who's on the WebEx is on them.
That's a great question. Sure, so why don't we start with the people at the table and we will go around. I'll start with Mega and we can go around this way. So if you could all just give us your name and your, your background a little bit and we'll start with that. Is that helpful?
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't need background personally. I just need people's names. But if that's what you would like, that's great.
Your titles.
Okay, my name is Mika. I'm a senior engineer, vice chair and complete street recording.
Frank Batiste, I'm a Fairfield resident, former RTM member, and I'm Bureau Chief for Transportation, Traffic and Parking for the city of Stanford.
Hurley Fairfield. Calmaris Chief of Police.
Jeff Randolph Planting and Zoning Commissioner Alternate.
Emmeline Harrigan Assistant Planning Director.
Kevin Kylie, I'm a member of the Police Commission.
Anthony Calibers Director of Parks and Recreation.
Okay. And on the WebEx members, do we have any members up there? I know there's a new addition.
Sergeant Com is not. He's my traffic sergeant. He just wanted to observe.
Okay.
Alex is would be the alternate. Alex is not.
That's not correct. Is that, is that correct? I'm not, I'm just not a hundred percent.
We're short one alternate, but the other is Mike Freeman.
Mike Freeman is not in today. He's an alternate, is a second alternate next to Jeff.
Yes. So Mike is an alternate?
Yes. And Jeff is an alternate.
Jeff is an alternate. Okay.
All seven members are here.
It's not yet decided.
All right, I just, I'm sure I have it. So the voting members that are here.
Anthony.
He's a voting member. And.
Frank.
And Frank, right?
Yes, Frank is here, Anthony is here, Chief Calameres is here.
Yep.
Mika is here, Bill Hurdle is here, Emmeline is here.
And Kevin. Kevin.
And Seven, yeah.
Okay, so Jeff, you're an alternate. So you are now a voting member at a meeting. Okay, I just want to make sure I got the right people in the right places. Okay. We're good to go. Thank you for that. Is that helpful, bro?
Thank you very much.
Yes, very well. Very well. All right, so with that done, we'll move on to item five, which is to hear and discuss various traffic calming improvements of King's Drive. Mr. Hurley.
We've been approached by a neighborhood on King's Drive and they held a, just a very preliminary meeting with the neighborhood just to see and hear their concerns and document them.
Yes.
In a nutshell, they're concerned with speeding and they're concerned with higher volumes that should be recorded on a 10 home street. We have done very preliminary traffic counts where we had figures of about 100 vehicles per hour. So 190, I think in a two-hour period. So it's definitely a cut through the speeding. The 85th percentile speed is 27 miles per hour. So in my opinion, anyway, the volume was much more of a factor. But we had shown a couple of videos of vehicles going through the stop sign and going at higher rates of speed. So they were concerned about that. There were six or seven people from the neighborhood that seemed to support closing or blocking King's Drive and King's Lane. And that's what's shown on this little map here. Where we could, DPW could install planters or some sort of barriers that would prevent cars from going through and making King's Lane a through street to King's Drive. Also at the meeting, though, were three representatives of the Ukrainian club. And they had major concerns about their rental hall. That's where they make a lot of their money to support the building services that they host there. And they had, seem to have an event at least every weekend, maybe even multiple events. And so they were very concerned of cutting off the traffic because it meant that people from outside of town would have a harder time finding the building and they would have to drive all, all the way around instead of the most direct.
So I'm sharing a screen with everybody over there who cannot, who are on Zoom. So Bill, if you want to.
So before we go to this, can I ask a procedural question on this? We did not see this at the Police Commission before the Police Commission stopped looking at these types of things a few weeks ago. So help me as the new person to your process, the new person without last week, which I think I need to learn a little bit better. Where does this presentation fall into that process? Because I just, is there a gap in between these two boards that haven't gotten to see this yet? Because I'm not sure if this feels like it's properly before us because of what's been done or what's not been done or where we are on that timeline or the process.
And that's something that.
Help me cross that bridge.
That, that's something that this board has to, we have to define better. One of the things is it was informally brought up at a police site survey when they went around sites looking at potential, putting it on a police agenda. I have tried to seek fire department comment, which I have not received yet. This is at the very beginning of the stages. But it does bring up a good point of how we want to finalize our, our projects and what's presented before the FTA. What we don't want is sidebar, you know, if, if the police now meets with somebody, I meet with another group, Mega meets or whoever, try to put it all together and present it. So after the meeting, I said I would briefly discuss this with the Fairfield Traffic Authority. And then from there, we would have to decide whether it involved engineering study, whether it involved engineering enforcement or if there was some sort of maintenance. You might recall the flow chart that Mega had shown last week.
I do. So where on that flow chart is this, like, right now?
So this is actually nowhere right now, to be honest. So this is what the procedure that we discussed last time. This is a data collection analysis. And Bill, you already finished the data collection, which was a few months ago. There was little gaps because Bill was coordinating with the neighbors and, and the fire department. So that kind of lapsed away.
Excuse me, we have to continue the data. As I said, this was very preliminary.
So the procedure stays the same. You will have a data collection. Engineering department will analyze the data and we will provide a conceptual design, like this, which actually is at a last moment because Bill had just yesterday the meeting. So technically moving forward, this should be submitted two weeks prior to this meeting. He's just giving you an update. Right now that he had a meeting yesterday and this is what Bill is trying to propose. It's just a discussion trying to propose in the next, as, as a conceptual design. So the procedure will stay the same. It's just that he is, just for the discussion purposes, Bill is producing this plan. But we should be submitting these plans two weeks before this. Moving forward, so.
So are we only out of sequence by two weeks? Or are we out of sequence? Because it seems to be informal and somebody's talked to somebody, talked to somebody who's met with a couple of people that isn't quite crystallized or formalized. There's no information is what I'm trying to say.
And then, and I think that's why it was a good idea to bring this up is again, to just highlight. In the, in the past, we would certainly have, if, if these be, if the neighbors were complaining of people going through stop signs and all that, then obviously enforcement would be a key component. So that might be the first thing to, to, to look at. We would collect more data. And then the question would be is whether we, as a subset or whether as a whole group do the vote or do we get more neighborhood input? Try to get a consensus. Because right now, if this item was before the board, we have, as I said, we have split. The neighbors seem to, you know, want this, but obviously the Ukrainian club does not. And so, you know, I would suggest that we study it a little bit more. Try to come up with some sort of compromised design before we present it to the FTA.
Well, that, that's my question to myself. I don't know enough to answer it yet, but I, it just feels a little out of sync as far as the overall approach. I mean, and that's why I was asking, was this, this wedged in between where the Police Commission stopped and didn't get to it? Or is it?
It's sort of was, as I say, it was brought up in like November. And so that's why I didn't, I didn't want the neighborhood to feel that.
That they were being. I get that. I'm sensitive to that. It just doesn't feel like, this doesn't feel like the process that we want to use going forward.
Yes.
Is that important because it's.
I don't know. I'm open to, to input on that from the board members.
Yeah, no, we are not open to this kind of process, the random throwing, the process that I discussed yesterday, last time in the meeting. We will be submitting the conceptual design and we will be also posting on our website so that public can see, not necessarily the comments, but just to see what the town engineering is coming up with. And, and the board members are able to see that conceptual design.
Okay, all right. So that helps. Yes, ma'am.
I just wanted to ask for clarification as to, is the, the club, do they only have access via King's Drive? I mean, right now they have access via.
That's the only access point. Because, yeah, and then King's Drive.
So King's Drive, like to the further east? It goes. Right, 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 okay.
Bronson Road and 95.
It's ways.
So it's quite.
It's ways, yeah.
It's ways in the afternoon. When I-95 is back.
Right, right, right.
I mean, so there's a lot to this. This is actually blocking off a street. So with all due respect to the neighbors, you know, this does, I, I, I think it's okay to have a brief discussion on this at the moment. And brief, I think, is the imperative word. But I think this probably needs to go back through the process.
Exactly.
So that we don't get out of sequence and the neighbors don't feel like we aren't attending to them. Okay, that's fair.
And I don't think it's, we're ready even to do a, a, a vote or a presentation, if you know what I mean, to even have it on the agenda, if you know what I mean. It was just a fact that we wanted to use this as an example. And then Mega has some other ones as well, where, you know, where, how, how are we going to address these goals?
And we can take that offline. Yes, sir.
If I could just ask, was, was the stop sign running complaint? Obviously, that's an enforcement component. Was that put through our target areas? Or is that an area?
Yeah, because that just came from the meeting on Wednesday.
That's right.
Okay, so.
It will be.
Yeah, so we're clearly on a, on a cadence here. Okay, which is fine. I mean, this is our first time through and this is a great, this is a.
I also, I also wanted to highlight too that, you know, if, if somebody has a complaint with Anthony or the chief, we, we don't want five different components. We're trying to.
Analyze. I know funneling.
Exactly.
Funneling. All right, so why don't we take a few minutes to learn about this? But I think that's where we should end this discussion because we're, we're, we're kind of over our skis on it. Okay.
I mean, I mean, we can just go on and we'll come back to it another time. I mean, it was just.
You want to give us a quick overview? Everyone's here. I'm not being disrespectful to that. It's processing.
Yeah, sure. So if, if you could just put the hand or somewhere, if you, if you look at the photo there, you would no longer be able to drive all the way through and do the right-hand shortcut there, which that's the stop sign, by the way. Everybody's blowing through according to the neighbors. And so we would put the planter boxes or we could do sawhorses or Jersey barriers as a temporary. Obviously, this could be a potential demonstration project first for any bolt. And maybe the little getting out of the way detour might not be as bad as what the Ukrainian says, says. Or perhaps there could be a, you know, by doing this, it might create a problem somewhere else. So there's a lot of things that still have to be considered.
Quick question.
Sure.
Are they experiencing, experiencing a backup at the intersection of King's Drive and Mill Hill Road?
Yes, they, they say they, they are. They're, they're there.
Yes. Frank's saying, yes.
That's right, this is Frank's area. And in, and in King's Lane, it's also backed up.
Back up along King's Drive, so.
It's when there's rush hour, ways bypasses everyone off I-95. It's a little bit cut through Southport, then it tells you to take the left on King's Lane up and over and jump back on 95 at Bronson. So in rush hour, it backs up at the other intersection there.
So, you know, as, there was also consideration for, so if we block it off, the fire department would have a major say on that, making sure that they can still have access and, and get to the Ukrainian club and the office building, which the office building shouldn't be a problem. There's also a new subdivision or a, a development proposal of, I think, 10 homes or units. No, on, on King's Drive, actually. So they, they were very concerned about that.
This one.
It's triangle.
Yep. And then there's currently two bus stops, both at the, at the intersections at the, either end of King's Drive, so to speak. Where there's bus stop there, they had, so that was the, the dead end. The neighborhood seemed to be in favor of it. As I said, the Ukrainian club was against it. Another idea was one way, but we're doing one way. There's pros and cons. It would cut the volume in half, certainly in the one direction it'd be near zero. The other way, the other though drawback would be that if you're traveling on a road that's 24, say, feet long, wide, and there's nobody coming the other way, you have a tendency to speed up because you know there's traffic only one direction. So that would be a con for that. Another idea we thought of was at the Ukrainian club, wow, everything would work if we could give them a driveway out to Route 1. But you can't see it on the aerial, but there's a hill right at King's Lane that goes down to the underpass. And so there's a sight distance problem, most likely, can't say for sure, but most likely there'd be inadequate sight distance. And so that idea was kind of squashed. And then there's other ideas of, well, are there other forms of traffic calming, which they were mixed? Some people, why don't we do speed bumps or humps? Other people were saying, well, that won't do, that won't stop the volume. So we were going back and forth on that. So that's kind of a, a quick little summary of what was discussed at the meeting. I will have meeting minutes and I could certainly share with.
Is, is the office building the only driveway off of King's Lane?
Right now, yes, that's true. And then if you blocked it off, it would be some sort of like a hammerhead. If you had, if somebody went down there and then had to turn around, they could turn around in the parking lot if they were visiting the office building. If they don't belong there, they would have to do some sort of hammerhead.
What's the great differential between the office building and the Ukrainian club? Could we do a shared access?
I think, I think it is a differential, but is it? Yeah, I think there is, but I'm not going to check. That's a different idea. And again, when you're doing share access, you know, easements and going through. But hey, when you have a situation like this, you try to keep an open mind, as they say.
So just now to the very, very basic level, what is the problem that they're trying to solve? The, the actual issue that's causing it to be, you know, discussed?
Well, if, if people weren't using, if the people weren't using it as a cut through, they would expect to see probably with 10 homes, roughly 100 vehicles a day on the road. And they're getting.
Going on which way?
It doesn't matter, just on, on, on King's Drive, anyway. But now they're seeing certainly during rush hours and any time that turnbikes backed up in either direction, they're seeing cut throughs where again, estimates of 100 vehicles per hour are on there.
During rush.
During rush hour or when the turnbikes.
So is the goal to eliminate traffic? Is it to eliminate speeding?
I think it's to cut down volume and that by cutting down the volume, hopefully that will correct the speeding issue. If not, then, you know, in the engineer's toolbox or through enforcement or other methods, there's a way that we could try to chip away at the speed.
Well, you said that the 85th percentile is 27.
Seven, right, which relatively is low.
M U T C D states plus five would be a, would be a speeding issue. So this would not be considered a speeding issue.
That would be correct under normal search. But again, you have to also figure when there's a lineup of 10 cars, they're only doing five or 10 miles per hour while somebody, with free flow, you know, could be considerably higher. So the number could be slightly skewed for that.
Yes, Chairman.
What you back here first? I'll go to the after.
This is a big question. I never quite grasped the, the statistics behind the 85th percentile. Even, you know, for a tertiary road, with this would be a tertiary. So at some point, hopefully you can grapple with whether that's appropriate. If there's 120 cars on a tertiary, okay, on a tertiary road, you know, real small residential road. So does that mean that we don't know what that 15, remaining 15 percentile, like, you know, people, how fast they're going? 120 cars, whatever the, you know, the number is that are going 60 or what I, you know, I, we just don't know what that is. And if two cars are going 60 miles per hour on a small road like that, that would be for someone living there. That would seem like a pretty bad thing. So I, that, that's what I don't get from the, I mean, maybe Frank would talk to that or, you know, what does it mean on a road like this for those statistics? Would you want to talk about that remaining 15, you know, percentile? And what the, what the actual range of speeds in that are and what that might actually mean to a, to a resident there?
It's hard to design everything for like the outliers, so typically don't. But I think the issue here, just from what I'm hearing and guessing, what I've seen, it's more like the cut through. And then with the cut through, you had people who were probably going faster in that time when they can and they're probably running the stop sign because they don't want to wait. They're on their way home somewhere else and want to blow through it, so.
There's an expectation that there's no traffic coming from the Ukrainian club because they drive that every day and they don't see traffic there.
Right.
So there's an anticipation that there's, there's no traffic coming in the other direction. And driver frustration as a result of traffic, like all these things piling up on top of each other.
I'm just like from my small road, you know, if, if five cars an hour were driving 50 miles an hour, it would seem like a problem, but that's not captured in the 85th percentile.
Um, I think two process questions. One is, how did we prioritize this project over? I mean, how many projects are there like this in the queue? And how did this one end up rising to the top? That's question one. And question two is, how many alternatives did you look at? Because we're talking about a lot of different issues here, you know, it could be a choker. There could be speed hops. There could be, you know, half a dozen other options. And I guess back to the main question is like, what is it we're trying to solve? Because I'm getting texts here from Sarah. Sarah's like, well, if we close exit 20, we're not going to have people going through here. So I mean, how, how many, what is it we're trying to solve? How did we come, how did this raise to the top? How many, how do you, do you guys usually evaluate a number of different engineering and prioritize this? This is one of five things you looked at? Or is this what the neighbor suggested? And then what is it we're trying to accomplish? Those are kind of my, and those are hard questions.
Well, one of the things is this neighborhood used a Q Alert system. And so, which is a town's complaint system filing that they, you know, had major issues. At that time, we actually had an intern available where they could do a traffic count for us. And when they came back, as I said, with, with 200 in a two-hour period, it caught my attention because, you know, it was through the I T E trip generation manual. You should only be getting, you know, 10 cars per hour. And when the numbers are skyrocketing, it's obviously, and we all would agree, it's, it's a cut through road. And so it grabbed my attention. We could certainly look at crash data. As I said, this was only the beginning. It was just trying to formalize, you know, what their concerns were. We had to weigh it, as I said, because it's not a unanimous, you know. And then, and that's another thing we have to, you know, maybe consider too is there could be some things that are proposed eventually or down the road where you have half a neighborhood that loves it and the other half doesn't like it. And so how, how are we going to vote on that? You know, do they, do their opinions matter? Do we stick to the data and the facts? And, and things like that, so.
To get you, to go out of order a little bit, but um, you generally answered, you said that there's some, a statistic here that made this rise to the top. Is this one of 50? Is it one of five? Is it, you know, how many, how many projects like this are?
Well, Mega, Mega's going to have a bunch here that, that's also been the hopper for quite some time. And that's item number six, just to let you know on that. And then, and then from there, that, that's another reason why, again, we're starting fresh. How, how are we going to, you know, try to, you know, rate these? Are we gonna, I know. Are we gonna, I know at one, at one time, the police commission tried to limit five or six items on an agenda. You don't want to have twenty on an agenda because just looking at this one, if we continue to talk, it might be forty-five, and if the public was here commenting, you might have forty-five minutes or an hour just on one item. So these are all the things, you know, as we're starting, you know, just trying to bring up different situations where I think we can try to improve on the situation from, from before, because that was still a pretty good one, you know.
It was. Now, the difference is, though, on that comment, by the time things got to the police commission, they were already through a number of different processes to get there, and they were actually a voting item at that point in time. They got to us with a recommendation, whether the recommendation was from the police department, from engineering, from Public Works, or typically those are the main three sources. And at that point in time, all, a bunch of these other things had already happened, maybe not everything, and there was always room to go back and revisit. But it didn't come to us kind of in the conceptual stage.
Right, and all right, from here, you know, let's talk about this, what are we going to do? So I think as a board, we're going to have to, in addition to the workflow chart, we're going to have to, and I don't know this answer, to make a determination of what qualifies something to get here and what form does it have to be in when it arrives here? Is it just things in the queue that merit discussion? Or have those discussions or meetings taken place below the surface? And they're getting here to us in a much more codified. Right, and as a voting item.
As a voting item. And if they're real big projects with variables, you know, things can take some time. I, I'm just, I'm just wondering about that. Yes, ma'am. Get a question?
No, I, I just going back is that right now, as we have discussed in the last meeting, Bill G had actually brought a very, brought a very good point that right now, moving forward, we want to have a planning, not just reactionary complaints. Because when I was discussing that these are traffic complaints oriented, was like last time, we were all reactionary. Anybody was submitting the traffic request form, we will go out, see if it requires further analysis, we will do further analysis, and we will propose a countermeasure and implement it. So this is what the last procedure was. Now, moving forward, I think we have to be more geared towards the planning, that how we are planning and how we are prioritizing these streets. We, this is where these complete street plans come as per the ordinance that was adopted last year. This is why I say specifically complete street plans, and this is where Bill G is orienting to have a planning rather than reactionary all the time. Right now, we are a little bit more reactionary than the planning phase. And so this is where we are going, and this is where the SS four A grant comes into play, where we will be hiring the consultants to prioritize the street. So that's coming forward. So to answer even Jeff's question, how we are prioritizing, when the planning is there and when the proper planning and how we are planning the streets, and which needs more attention, there'll be more coming clear at that moment. Right now, these streets are listed more as reactionary by persistent complaints from the neighborhood. And, and we are reacting, and when we go out there, yes, we cannot say that the street doesn't need any improvement. We follow the enforcement, for the enforcement happens, and still that the, the, the issue doesn't go away, then we go out and analyze the whole situation with the neighborhood and see what can we implement to make this road safer. So, you know, the safety comes first, and we cannot say this road is a perfect example, safety doesn't need any countermeasure. I feel like every street requires some kind of, some kind of an improvement there. It's not like a complete street component. So trying to achieve that through those reactionary phases, and this is how our list has developed right now, by persistent complaint, by, you know, by our TM district coming up and saying this is a problem here, or by bike and committee members. So this is, this is where we are, but moving forward, the planning will come.
I, I would say too, I mean, I think that some of, some of the development sites that'll be coming up as well, those are opportunities. And so it's, it's, you know, it's not, it's, it's going to be something where hopefully, you know, we can look at some of those projects and say, oh, can we do, can we have the developer do a bump out, you know, to make the pedestrian crossing more narrow? So those might think be things that come before us as well, where those are opportunities for implementing, I think, some of what should be.
Implemented as a complete street ordinance. Now we have that ordinance, we have to see the street and make sure that it is meeting that complete street component. Not the fully, but, you know, some areas where we can improve that. And wherever we touch the street, that requires something, unfortunately.
And I would also, I would also say too, to Bill's point, and, and we, we get this because in plan and zoning, you know, we, we don't operate in a popularity realm, unfortunately. But we're going to have a guide that helpfully gives us the parameters in which to operate to make better choices, regardless of whether or not it's understood at the point to be an improvement to a street, right? So I think we are, we are doing less, I think, popular, popular polling on this, checking with our, with our best practices, complete streets manual, in lieu of kind of.
And, and case in point, even for this, that's perfectly like you say, opportunity. If this parcel was, say, a little bit larger, and they were going to say do twenty or thirty units, there'd be a temptation, say, you know what, you might have a better chance, or maybe it would be a requirement of you give the town enough area where we could create a cul-de-sac and turn around. And then Ukrainian club and the office building still have their thing, and then you could dead-end because they would provide the town the extra space they need, whether it's bulbouts, circle, you know, turnarounds, or whatever method, or a secondary driveway or access. So those are, yeah, those are all good points.
Just a, just a quick comment that we also need to be thinking that there is going to be a consultant that's going to come in and, to some extent, if I'm not mistaken, prioritize where our pain points are in, in the town.
That's what we're, yeah.
That's what we're expecting.
We have the, it is a federal grant program, and right now, a lot of federal grants, even if you started, are kind of been on halt. So we're trying to figure out which ones get vetted and stuff.
So I think like, my, the point I'm trying to make is, we may, we may be reactionary for a time until that consultant comes in and does their work, and then gives us a priority list of, of where we need to start planning for.
So I understand that being reactive is where we are today, because we're, this neighborhood is organized as we know. Because they, they're, they came in force to our last T P meetings, Bill. But we should have a criteria for selecting projects. There should be a series of categories in, in the draft, bike and pad policy that we've got, I've been working on with. We've got criteria for selecting, selecting policies. I'll send it to you in a minute. But just real, real quickly, it gives weights to safety, transit connectivity, health, livability, context, equity, aesthetics, economic development in the environment. So when we get a policy, which is part of the SS four A grant or prior to that, I, I would suggest that we have some type of criteria, rather than it's the neighbors who scream the loudest, even though I was one of the neighbors who screamed that.
There are five, five times enables have screamed, it's just not one time. And we have actually implemented low-cost measures to high-cost measures, and still the complaint doesn't evaporate. So this is why we are here with the list.
Envy in getting those calls. Just, just to let you know, yeah, because that's how, in a way, that's how we have a matrix system on how, how do we decide which sidewalks get done? And then with an aggressive, you know, paving program that we've been doing, and now with the, you know, now you pave a road, you have to do all the ADA ramps and all that. So that kind of pushed away the, the matrix, and, and that's kind of what we're going by. And so same thing, you'd have to certainly in your weighted score system, include the DPW schedule, or if a utility is going to end up, like you said, in an opportunity, the utility is going to end up ripping up the road, that might be an opportunity as well. So you have to include those in the weighted system.
Okay. I think I understand everything that was said, except I'm still a little fuzzy on how things get on the list today. And, and, and in what stage are they? And then where are they coming from? And what our expectations are? Is our collective expectation here as members of this board to be receiving projects that have been vetted by the proper parties, who have had input along the way, whether it's public safety, engineering, public works, or whoever it might be, to get to a certain level? And what is that level before they're before us to consider, ask questions, vote on? Or are we at the front of the line with the neighbors who are submitting things in the queue? And we partners in them from day one to, to figure all of that stuff out before it were to come to this body to be, to be voted on? I'm just a little unclear on where we are in the process, and maybe that's just me, but I'm not clear on that.
So that's, you're not clear on the process of the streets that are listed on number?
Not specifically. I'm not clear on the process of what stage they need to be in to be here. What we're expected to do either prior to that, or part of that, or post that. That's the part I'm not. For instance, if I, if I, if me and ten of my neighbors all yell and scream, and I, I'm not making fun of people, and we all say we want a yield sign here or a stop sign, and enough of us yell and scream about it, does that cross the chasm of qualifying to be on an agenda to come here? Or do all of those, or do some of those things that would have happened in the past, public safety, engineering, and those things have to take place to determine whether it's a valid request at all for it to be here, to be considered?
I see, I, I think by Mega's flow chart and kind of mirroring what the police department so had done before, that's probably the case. But he, basically, the question is, is this going to be a voting group? Or are we looking at, like you said, is the last step for signs, paving markings, traffic calming, signals? Or is it have more of a proactive, you know, in, input into the situations? Like you said, we're, we're the first stop or the first initial stop, and then I think in the flow chart, we were mirroring, mirroring what the police department had. Yeah, it would be vetted and whatever, and then come to this group.
This we have.
Double checking.
If ordinance isn't crystal clear, that's why I'm like, because I read it again, and I go, huh.
So that, but that's where we're at, is do we want to be a more active role, or is it more of just?
What is the bandwidth of this board to do such a thing?
Exactly.
Because I can only imagine what it could turn into if it's allowed to. That's all I'm saying. Okay, the floor is yours.
So we can move on to our next item. See the listed items that I have written on our page. Know where these projects are and where they are on our website. So I have this traffic authority website, so it's fairfieldct.org, you know, and then slash traffic authority. So this is the traffic authority website. I have to fill in a lot of our other materials, flow chart, the water processes, and where people, where we can find certain things. So that's missing here, but just to, you know, start, start this whole. So on our left are agendas and meetings, so every town clerk will be posting their agendas and meeting minutes here, so we can actually go and find our agenda here. So traffic authority, every public can find their agendas and meetings here too. Contact the authority if somebody has to contact. Now, this is developed because I think there is a phase for the public comments on our agenda, that if public has any comments, they can submit to contact here. This is where they contact the authority key. So if anybody has any kind of comments, again, type this form up, your email address, your street, your message, and that will go to me right now. I have been listed, Kevin, you're also listed in that email address right now. I think he just, actually, he listed online before it was. It is going to me, it will go to you, it will go to him online. So we, so only me and Kevin will have that access to the comments and will go from there. So this is where the public can post their comments for any kind of comments they have. And we have a submit a survey request. Now, before we used to have a PDF form in the police department, that public would fill that by pen and, and, and submit that paper. We have converted this into a webpage where they, they, you can, you know, type like mega, this comes up. I can type my phone number, which is required here, so let's type this. And then address seven twenty-five, Old, Old Road, Connecticut. And as they're going, they can type the street, like, you know, they have to know where's the street, which street has a problem. It's a similar, I have, we have actually imitated the similar form, which is right now, I like that form the way it is. So I didn't see any problem, but any comments from our board members are welcome if they want to change, you know, add between, I'm just typing. So they will type this online, and when they go to issues of concern, this is very important. This is where we discussed last time, that which department is handling what kind of concern? So accidents will go to police, clearing of bushes goes to DPW, parking goes to police department, pavement markings goes to DPW, road signs goes to DPW again. So school zone markings again goes to police. Sidewalk issues goes to DPW, speeding goes to DPW. So if anybody is typing speeding, it will automatically take them to DPW that. Sorry, speeding goes to.
Engineering. I don't know, I'm serious. But, but I'm sorry, just a real quick question. Shouldn't speeding go to engineering?
Well, it, it starts with an enforcement, so if.
No, no, but I, I understand what, what it's education, engineering enforcement. You're the last group. It should, speeding should go to engineering.
Because there's no, there's no designation that they go in that order.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
Well, I'm just saying that speeding is caused by engineering. It's, you guys pick up the pieces, write the reports, issue the tickets, but speeding is caused by a road that is improperly engineered.
Not necessarily. It's, it's caused by behavior.
Yes.
And sometimes behavior can be changed by enforcement efforts.
I beg to, I mean, yes, and people, you know, I, the roads I drive on are posted at twenty-five miles an hour, but they're engineered to do much faster than that. And that's primarily, my traffic engineer colleague here is nodding his head. Engineering has to have a lot of sight into the frequency of speeding in order to know where the roads are improperly engineered. So, and, and, you know, bad behavior, the person doing sixty down that road we were talking about, that's bad behavior. But engineering somehow has to get an awareness of, of where things are. If you inherited or.
But a, a road that's a straightaway, okay, doesn't always mean that even though you could do sixty, that you'll do sixty. It, it's, it's, it's a straightaway. It is, it is a behavior thing. We've always, and since they're an enforcement agency. But, yeah, maybe we, instead of it balancing as enforcement and, and engineering down here, it should be more balanced that, I think we all.
Goes hand in hand.
Well, that I get, but isn't the first baseline decision to determine if there is speeding? To identify the problem, because.
So to his point, when someone says, somebody, everyone's speeding on my road, doesn't that have to go to, to the police department first to determine whether that's a true statement or not? To, to some extent, so, so from an engineering point in favor of your argument, if engineering went out there and put up a black box and said, you know, put up a, a traffic analysis device and said, the speeding is happening between seven and eight, for the rest of the day, it's fine. And then they would tell us, go there between seven and eight, and you can change the behavior during that time. So.
So it's more of a partnership.
It's a partnership. Yeah, it, it's kind of a, it's kind of a.
It's not just, it's not just go look for the speeders first, then, then go elsewhere, it's kind of do both concurrently.
Yeah, so when we get a speed complaint, historically, we would take that step. We would take that step to do a traffic analysis, so that we know when is the best time to deploy our staff, because cops are expensive. And when we put them in a certain place at a certain time for an extended period of time to enforce traffic laws, that's a, that's a cost incurred to us and to, and to the town. So I agree with you to some extent, but we, we know, or, you know, we've all been here long enough, and, and our traffic guys know where the issues mostly are.
Yes. And sometimes on a particular street, I'll use Christine's example, where it's the, the red car, that, the red Mustang that's going, and so that would obviously be a police issue.
Four o'clock every day with the boombox going, right? Four o'clock every day with the boombox going, right?
So is it? Does it make sense for some of these automatic email feeds? Just think on speeding for a minute, would that go to police or or would that go to two places or is that complicating it?
It's good, it speeding goes to police and I had that conversation with Captain Rosari.
Okay.
Enforcement is the biggest component in this, if somebody's speeding, it's actually a violation and this is where police will investigate and collaboratively if it is not going away like. We have examples of listed streets here which had happened with speeding was a main issue there, and if it's not evaporating, then yes, the police and engineering will collaborate together to investigate further. So it starts with the police. So if they, you know, if parking goes to police and then they have to just define their like, for example, I, you know, I cannot bike or something like that, I cannot. Oh, you know. Use this lane for biking. So that's how they know, you know, but whatever their problem is, is this a recurring problem, yes or no, maybe it's no, maybe yes, they can upload their files, the pictures or. And you and they submit us, so technically right now I am the one who is receiving emails directly on my email address, but we will be routing to. See, thank you for submitting your traffic survey request and the confirmation email also goes to them that. Has received or so and so has received the email. Uh, from them, so this is how the public will be requesting. Uh, will be putting their concerns through this website. Uh, with these issues of. So that's one. These are important here and then traffic calming projects now this I worked this week. This takes to your calming, traffic calming projects, I know many people, public has been asking us the updates and they don't get the update and I feel like this is a good tool to update. Say for example, McHenry School. We have all the details written project overview that, you know, what happens, what is this project about, we got the grant and what initiated this project? Have these project limits map, it's still working, but this is like how we are thinking to start putting all the information in. Then we have all the project time here, so I have, then if somebody clicks on the. Only schedule, it takes to them to the schedule, so you see, this is a detailed schedule that has been developed after. Consultants, so they know that, you know, the surveying is going to start at fourth of February, which is Monday, it's thirty days, this is the end day, then the preliminary design comes. This is the day, this will, this is time we have estimated. And all these procedures are mentioned, utility coordination, right away coordination, review by town. Ten days notice to public, this has a lot of steps, public info meeting we will be having, and after public info meeting, we will be having appointments, determination, semi-final design review by town, then goes to submission to FTA. This is a perfect example. What we were talking about and how the public is involved and how FDA members are involved in improving the plans, so this is good example here. Submission to FDA have marked these important lines, this is very important, when two weeks before this, before the hearing, FDA approval, right over acquisition and then final design. So this project is actually estimated to finish in twenty twenty six, in April, April twenty twenty six, see the steps that are involved in this just the McHenry School.
It's an excellent tool in alerting the public that if you're expecting it to be an unrealistic expectation of the project will be done in a month or two. When they see these steps and at least as mega said, that we're do our best to notify them along the way, then then that should. That should alleviate a lot of issues.
So that's just detailed steps, people know where they are, if somebody knows, oh, it's, yeah, I shouldn't call in April, I. And we will be periodically updating, biweekly, we will be periodically updating the schedule if it has to update it. So that everybody can go on this website, learn about the project, what it is about, how this project was initiated. Uh, by the public, uh, and you know, why we are doing this project, so this is one thing, and then I have another public involvement and outreach. Uh, you know, I have it in town, we'll reach out to public, our survey work is completed, so this is written public, meeting is in July twenty twenty five. So this is how.
Yeah, I I love I love this, I so I do this on for parks, I've written a lot of projects already. Uh, very similar to you, the only other thing that I include, maybe we want to go that route at some point is. Funding source, like if we. Like I know you have it funded by the town, but like once we have the dollar amount, if it's one point four billion, whatever, um, but I'll also link to if we are doing outside contractors, like I'll link. You say designed by FTC consultants and I'll link to their website so people could check them out, but if we also put out a bid for that project. I also link to that bid, so again, I'm linking it right to our purchase, so it's kind of like one stop shopping, it's it's a lot, it's a lot of work, but. It makes it user friendly as.
More for information here, but yeah, that we can. Think about that, so the project funding numbers, I definitely put project received, the community grant for the construction only, the design is funded by the town. So you're working, filling up as we are proceeding, but I started this, this is how the stage will look for the people, so they not, you don't know, they know what is exactly going on in this project.
Another one, Jeff?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, yes. Then we have Millplains Road, similarly I did with. I will have to review these overviews, I just filled in just to start this whole project, so this gives you the project overview. And we have a project location, I like to put a path, but I just filled in for now with the words. Project timeline again, uh, they will go here and they can click the project timeline and this is what the project timeline is. Now, this project timeline looks shorter because we have only hired the consultants that I will be working closely with the consultant for the conceptual design. And that conceptual design during that two week period, we will also have a public. At that time, we're not having a separate public meeting because we had meeting before twenty twenty three, so they know what exactly we are, we are looking. Uh, their feedbacks has been taken, so when this conceptual design will be. Posted for two weeks, that's where the public will be able to see the plans and they are more happy to provide me their comments through this uh contact traffic authority forums at that point. So this is how the schedule looks.
While I have you there.
Yeah.
Steps five and six.
Yes.
I did speak to the town clerk. About that minutes of approval thing?
Yes.
Spoken in Roach, I did not speak to Betsy, she was out. Uh, but. There's no evidence that we have to do that. It it might be the practice of the police department or public works or any other department, once they have funding from 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 an elected or appointed body. But there's no requirement to wait until the following meeting or the minutes of the previous meeting to be approved. Before the item is actually approved, so you you could take action a day after step five, you don't have to wait until step six. You may not choose to do that, but you don't have to wait.
Yeah, so that's good to know.
Definitely.
So that's how this schedule looks, it will be periodically updating as we are moving from conceptual and if you decide to give this designs, final design or we are doing in-house, that's where we have to stop at conceptual design with these consultants. Uh, to exactly know what kind of improvement this roadway really is looking for. So that's where I. That's why the schedule is very short, after thirty percent conceptual design, we'll conduct a public meeting to gain feedback, please see the schedule for the estimated schedule. Project funding is by town only for concepts, conceptual design right now, the final design will be later decided. How we are, this is contact, and then similarly, uh. I did it with Sturgis Road, which is next, similar procedure, project overview, so everybody can know, now this this Sturgis Road, actually, the request came from a. One of the RTM member, Bill, who 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 did.
I don't remember the RT, Chris somebody, I I don't.
That they created whole sheet of the Excel sheet where the neighborhood. List of neighborhoods that really require improvements, I have taken that synopsis from her letter. And why that they think that Sturgis Road really needs an improvement, and that takes to Jeff's question before that, how we are prioritizing because there was like a neighborhood. Condition.
Just a quick question. Say we had a a smaller project that uh and it's not even a project. Um, an officer or a civilian says, you know, I mean, we have intersections all over town that don't have a stop sign at the end of their street. And and they say, you know, we live in an area, there's commuting, there's a conflict area, there should be a stop sign at this intersection because it intersects intersects with. You know, a a major roadway, how or? What is the sense of the board on how we should proceed with that, like, are those minor, you know, a police officer goes out there and looks at it and says, yeah, you know, there's a couple of. Uh, there should be a stop sign here and and you know, in the name of safety, there should be a stop sign there. We're charged with signals, signs and markings. How how are we gonna? Put those in to like the hopper so they kind of get done quickly? Because they're not really a project or or are we gonna?
Small little projects.
Exactly.
And it can become in a bigger project, who knows what is involved.
I think you have that on your flow chart. Go ahead.
Yeah, just how how often does that happen?
So like, can we? It's actually fair, it it happened pretty often at the police commission.
Yeah, that's a fairly often type of thing that came before us, what I would call not a, not the larger project type, but the smaller, should be sooner faster type of thing, yeah.
Yeah, so for for example, no parking sign because of, uh, you know. Next to an intersection so that there's line of sight, and when you have roads that have cars parked on it and you pull up to the intersection and there. You know, we could go there and issue an infraction, parking too close to the corner, but if it becomes pervasive, then then we could put signs up that say no parking here at a corner. My my point is, does that come before this body? We used to do it before the commission because they were the LTA. The LTA is designated signs, signals and markings. How how are those smaller projects gonna just kind of float to the top so that we could put the stamp on and put a work order in and?
Can I make a recommendation that you just you structure your agenda?
Okay.
To deal with those items. Put her on your agenda and then get to the bigger projects later, so just have a regular template for your agenda. That categorizes what those are.
And that's totally fine, I think that makes sense, I think your other question is what determines which bucket they're in.
That's right, so.
Are they in the fast track bucket, I need a stop sign, or are they in the, it's a bit more than that, there's other options available?
And who determines that?
More of a project side.
Does engineering determine that? Does does the complainant determine that, does the police officer that goes out and looks at it, you know? Uh, as part of his daily, his or her daily operations or observations?
Initial observation by the expert, the police or the engineer who is going out just listening and they feel that this has to be addressed, that's where the export level. Uh, determination comes, and if the police officer comes and say, hey, mega, I think there is a problem, there's a safety issue and I agree, and I think that something has to be done, what we can do. So that's where my data collection and analysis will start in order to see what kind of, what can we do with that? Uh, problem to offer, is this just as painting a stop bar or putting a stop sign, which is no matter, no brainer, you have to have a stop sign, then it's quick. But if there is a engineering judgment involved in like three or two ways, intersections where, you know, we have to follow some kind of a procedure. Where, you know, you need data collection, analysis to be consistent with other roadways. You know, we cannot just put here and then other people say what I want to, so that's one thing, consistency. So consistency of what kind of problem it is, uh, you know, engineering judgment when we have to make, I have to do data collection and analysis and that's the first step I would start if. It's coming from the export opinion was recommending along with the neighborhood.
So there has to be a, based on your analysis and your judgment, there has to be a shorter kind of a fast track process, faster track process. To get things like that before us because we are going to see some oddities along the way, we've seen, um. For instance, where was it, chief? One of the, one of the perpendicular streets to Beach Road, for whatever reason. The yellow line got taken out, I don't know why or how or the history on it, but one of them.
Repaving.
Was it repaving?
They did a lot to.
And then the yellow line never got painted back over and that I think the majority of the folks that lived there. Liked the fact that there wasn't a double yellow line up and down their road. And I have no opinion on that, other than that when some of the folks on the parallel streets came to us and wanted the same thing, we had, we had an issue to to answer. So there there will be things like that that are kind of like, eh, you know, not necessarily, maybe there's engineering involved there, maybe it's police work, maybe it's just doing the same thing on all the streets. But there's there's some of that kind of stuff too, I'm sure.
Like you said, relying on the expert, if it's a specific location, you know, it is just one versus a whole street or a whole project. And that and the separated, I think is is the smart thing because you could certainly fast track those. Uh, the example is, you know, at a T intersection, uh, if they wanted to stop on the minor, I mean, that that's almost a no brainer in a sense.
Here's where the, here's where the conflict exists is if if we can fast track a stop sign to put it on a T intersection on the minor. Then somebody says, well, you just put a stop sign over there, why couldn't you put one in the middle of first?
Right, a four-way intersection, but then that's.
Yeah.
Where now you need engineering study.
I mean, in most of those situations too, though, I mean, it's like you're saying like, all right, it needs the stop sign, but I mean. How long did it not exist, can it just wait till the next month meeting for that approval?
Yeah, that's what we, I think.
Oh, I totally agree with that, yeah, I'm saying it needs to come before the board, but. If if we continue to prolong some of these small items, um, this, the hopper, the queue is.
Agenda is gonna get.
Exactly. And it's gonna get pretty full pretty fast and we also have to be concerned about the precedent, right? If you do it here and don't do it there, that's a whole lot of kettle of fish that, trust me, you don't want to be in.
Yeah.
We.
Well, that's why I was kind of asking how often it happens, like, because. My instinct is to say it should come here, but then, you know, in my opening a can of worm, where there's now like two hundred and fifty things on the. Yeah, it's almost a, it's it's almost like a budgetary consideration, if there are things that aren't material, they get voted in blocks and so. Engineering has to review the stop signs because they got to show where the stop line goes in, so if they review it, you go through and say, here are the ten things that they reviewed, any questions? Usually will be no, and then they can get approved en masse, just like a, just like invoices would at a at a meeting, and then the thing is, and it's almost. Capital related, so if it's, it it's all dollar amount, unless there's a, unless there's a, uh, unless there's a a test project. Uh, some temporary project, which is not financially material, but probably would need to be voted on, but but the small things, I mean, it's it's all dollar related, if you're putting a stop sign in, you know.
It's a good idea to group them all together, and again, assume now, again, there might be one that.
Did you review it? Because because that's what we're trying to get on TPZ, we're trying to get a better. Sign off on things, because we get stuff that doesn't have enough information, so if we say. Mega signed and she's she's put her engineering stamp on that you don't have yet, but you're going to get, right? This is, this is approved, we all say, okay, we're confident in mega's judgment and we just approve it in mass.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, no, it's just like, um, just Frank, what in Stanford, you go through these kind of. Hmm. Or stop set?
No, but that's because of the, I'm the LTA, so. When my office makes a determination, we don't have to do any formal meeting, I just approve it. So it's a little different.
Yeah, it's just kind of food for thought, what gets on.
We do work with the police department a lot, like hand in hand.
Yeah.
Are we an outlier, are we, do you think we're an outlier for a large town, small city? In in the amount of public meeting time that we spend on stop signs and field signs?
I don't think so, I wouldn't say you're an outlier.
Well. And it, so it would be my understanding that when. We have a fully developed complete street plan. Maybe it speaks to whether, based on the roadway categorization. Whether those kinds of implementations are appropriate. And then maybe it's not something that has to come before us, it could be within the authority of the engineering department, based on that complete streets plan, would be my understanding, so that. You know, maybe we're looking at larger scale things, but for those minor things, if it falls within the plan that you've developed, then. It is within the, you know.
Yeah.
It's within the purview of the board, yeah.
Yeah, or or within the purview of the department.
Using the term permit, you know, uh, you have the certificate and then you have the full blown permit and the certificate. Especially with like deep or general permit, well, if you meet these conditions, boom, it's almost like get it automatically. While the other, you have to go through the whole process.
Yeah.
And the other thing is, I think we're likely, since we're new and we're and we're newly, um, you know, published to the to the citizens, you know. It's it's pretty likely that we're gonna have a big first push of things to look at, to consider, to do. And then I think at some point it should level off to a reasonable, consistent basis, uh, so.
Yeah, that's where the right of way manual is coming into play too, because the one that I drafted last time. And we will be putting tabs on a right of way manual that completely decides like what kind of zoning classification, what kind of roadway and what kind of improvements on each roadway is prioritized.
Right, if you could go back to one of those. Spreadsheets.
Spreadsheet, oh, you need the schedule.
The project may have a schedule. So. Without being, can you go back to the other one that had more steps in it?
Oh, McKinley?
Yeah. So without being overly black and white about it. Because I know we can't be black and white, especially at the beginning, we're gonna be learning, we're gonna be figuring all this stuff out, so not not saying this in that vein. But in this case here, this particular project, we're not going to see it till I, we're not going to see it till step eleven, which is what?
Eleven to twenty five, yeah.
So if we were to take this, if we were to take this type of template and putting these little smaller issues aside that I think we still need to figure out. And we might be talking about them probably more than we need to or might be required to post complete streets or whatever it is. So this is something that would come before us in the chapter.
Yeah.
So. Anything else that's either like kind of under discussion now or things that we're talking about maybe doing like this? I think in a perfect black and white world, we wouldn't even be involved in any of those until.
Until the end.
Until a similar step, or to a similar place. That was my earliest question is when, when do we, when does this board take action on things? Yes, sir.
So being involved in a lot of planning zoning issues, there's a concept called a preliminary site plan review. Where a board is informed of something that's significant. So it just doesn't come in at the end when everything is completely done. Because as a as a board, as an applicant, both, um, not not applicant here, but an applicant elsewhere, you need, you need to tell people what's coming. Uh, and that would inform the public on something like this, it would inform the board on something that's happening. And it might give us opportunities to provide questions, feedback or guidance.
So that's a good concept, I happen to.
Common, it's a concept we use, right?
Usually.
But as a board, we have to decide what projects merit that type of pre-warning, if you will, and what substance is part of that pre-warning.
As a finance guy, I keep going back to dollar value. So maybe it's something that's significant, so back to the notion of a master plan. So if we had a master plan of all traffic signs and we approve that, then we wouldn't have to come back and revisit incremental traffic signs. Like this is a pretty, what's the dollar value on McKinley?
Well, we just received a grant for six hundred and eighty one thousand dollars for construction and our design money was approved for hundred and sixty eight thousand dollars.
Nice, but it's a good chunk. But to your point, we would have went through that week, but the town or whoever was proposing these projects would have went through that process for the funding. Months before this, maybe even years in some cases, so there has been that notification. And not that the public's paying attention for a project that's gonna be that many years out. No, no, they they do, but my point is they may have asked for this money two years ago and again, the project's still another year away.
Away, yeah, yeah.
Did it go before the police commission before?
This one?
Yeah.
No, because this didn't go because we didn't do anything with this project, it's just not even started with the conceptual.
Yeah.
I guess.
Oh, go ahead, Frank.
I was just gonna say, do you mean like would this type of project have gone before?
This type of commission before?
Yeah, because of crosswalks and.
So what, whatever.
Maybe not for the big thing, but certainly for pieces of it that pertain to.
Again, signs.
Yep.
Payment markings.
And if there was a, if there was a company that was doing the construction, they would present to the commission, yeah.
So the um, the app, there isn't an absolute dollar value that I think, while while I think it's a good concept. We're just gonna have to be open minded to what we learn about upfront so that we're informed, to Jeff's point. So that we know what is coming as of substance, that's not just a stop sign and is a little bit more than this, but it looks like it could be.
So I guess, this is the example, so you, the board would want us, rather than be blindsided.
So, oh, yeah, this is an interesting, this is an interesting example, the one that we're looking at. I mean, this would be at ground zero, this wouldn't even be at, this wouldn't even be at 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 a one yet, you haven't surveyed anything.
Yeah, it starts on Monday.
Right, so in a case like this, where there's multiple options, there could be an inexpensive solution, put something up. Or it could be a much more grandiose solution, which is going to involve roadways and construction and paving and all that crazy stuff, right? It could be two million bucks or whatever, so we would want to know about it, but, you know, then it's going to go back through this process, okay? Right, that makes sense.
This is like, yeah, template process.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
So I was running with the, with these, uh, all projects are, I have uploaded most of them. So Sturgis Road, I was going similar to, and Sturgis, it was initiated by the residents, they complained about this. You know, it gives you an overview why this project is initiated. They feel unsafe and there is a school around that area and they want to feel more, have a more pedestrian friendly environment. So we, engineering department with the consultants, we are actually studying these intersections. These are the nine intersections that we are studying with the neighborhood. The first step is definitely the data collection and analysis, which is scheduled in March uh for data collection and analysis. And we will have a sidewalk meetings, which the beta is a consultant that is hired, engineering and beta will have a sidewalk meeting. Uh, starting in March. And once we have their sidewalk meetings to understand these intersections, we will do the data collection, meaning all this traffic related volumes. Bike and pet, all the data will be evaluated, it will take sixty days for this. And that data collection and the conceptual design will be developed from that data collection. Uh, and and what we think are the best countermeasures on these intersections, so that's how we will develop the conceptual design. I will be also posting that this is a conceptual on our two weeks for the public and they can put their comments through this website that we have just created. Web page we have created, uh, they can put their comments during that two week period, we will also have that uh. Uh, during that time, now, I'm not sure if we want to prove, the board will be proving those conceptual design at the time. Or or they want to approve after the final design, that something has to be, we can determine in it how we move forward. But for now, we have only hired the consultants for the conceptual design, we will determine after conceptual design if you want to give that to the final design. And and if really has to, what intersection really needs an improvement after all these analysis. So this is in just a little bit of schedule from conceptual.
Do my friends on zoning, you guys ever approve conceptual designs or is it always more of a final product that you're looking at to? Improve, change or vote up or down on?
I I work in a lot of different states and um, a lot of states have preliminary, Connecticut.
Yeah, we have pre-app review, which is concept, but it's not binding.
So in a lot of states, a lot of states, they've got preliminary site plan approval. And like, I do a lot, most of my work, and then you've got final, and sometimes you'll.
Yeah.
Smash them together, but preliminary site plan review is is for like our projects in town here. We don't formally vote on them, but we, but we see projects, we see projects numerous times.
Yeah, very, very conceptual, but but I would say when it comes down to actually voting for a project, that is the project that we expect to see constructed. And there's bonding requirements and, you know, so.
Generally.
In a lot of states, there's two.
There might be three meetings.
Connecticut, there's, there's only one always, or is there?
Yes, only one.
I think it depends on the on the municipality. Do you have two in Stanford?
We only have one, but we have, we do have a, like, you can have a preliminary site plan meeting with.
Meeting, yeah, but.
Stanford has a planning and a zoning. They have two separate boards.
Most states.
The sign offs.
Yeah, so some, so they have to go to the planning board to make sure the project is consistent with the planning.
Votes, because it's not the same.
And the zoning board has to approve.
It's not the same.
Yes.
It's not the same board voting twice.
Most state, most states, they vote twice, you can ask to put them together, but most states, they vote twice. Preliminary site plan review and then final site plan review.
But I feel it does not.
Okay.
No.
But that's a pre-submital review, so that's an informal process.
And you kind of get a lay of the land and people kind of, you know, you're getting feedback, yeah.
They will, they'll see how it goes with, if you want to vote on conceptual or it really has to go to final.
Right.
Well, and so for step, sorry, step three. I guess my question is, does the conceptual design include alternatives?
Yes.
Okay, so.
It's like a preliminary thirty sixty percent of that design that we will be putting like sixty percent in this case, I won't go thirty sixty. Like sixty to ninety, I will take this too. Because we want to reduce the steps for this one, so I will take sixty because we will know with the data collection, what kind of fundamental measures within the right of way. We are proposing the best of the best alternatives and yes, to your point, we will have those alternatives, options, best pick. And and we're going from sixty to construction, this is where we don't intend to change any of the plans or anything afterwards.
So like, Megan, do you standard, do you use standard ten, thirty, sixty, hundred?
Not all the time, it depends. McKinley is one of the thirty sixty ninety because the public involved is so much heavily involved, DOT projects are thirty sixty ninety.
That would be good, we asked the applicants to do that, to say thirty percent, site plan sixty percent. Yeah, so if we then looked at it, scoping.
Yes.
Look at it, it's scoping, hey, we want to do a project thirty percent preliminary, sixty percent.
Semi-final and ninety is final, when the permits.
Look at it in ninety.
Yeah, you're right, so this is how when the permits get involved, sixty, thirty, sixty, ninety. When the projects like these, I don't intend to have permits in it, I'd like to have the counter, best countermeasures and give it to sixty and then go to ninety, we're reducing the steps here. Of, you know, in any, in case scenario with a heavy public import is involved, there is opposing stair resistance and yes, thirty sixty nineties before we go start approving.
You don't do ten?
No, no.
So scoping, you don't review?
No, we don't do ten, we just go from thirty, not in these kind of scenarios.
But but I would say, I mean, I know that, so Mika and I and Bill, we worked on. Um, we were trying to go after a LoSiP grant for um, Ash Creek Boulevard and Black Rock Turnpike. And so I know that that project went before police commission and it was kind of a conceptual design. Because we were gonna go after that funding.
Yes.
For crosswalks across Black Rock Turnpike.
Yeah.
To connect into the BJ's, to cross Ash Creek, because we're sending a thousand people, a thousand units in that area, right? So we knew that we wanted pedestrian improvements to be made even before the projects were fully implemented. Because right now there's not crosswalks there now, so we, so we presented that to the police commission in its prior iteration as a concept. We got feedback from the police commission about better, you know, doing accessibility retrofits as well, that just doing the pavement markings at the time was not gonna be adequate. So I would say that there there is a process to be able, because i- in in my universe. There will be private developers who come to the table and I'm gonna ask them to do improvements. For, you know, when they have to redesign their curbs anyway and their driveway aprons anyway. And to do crosswalks where it's appropriate, where there are corner sites. And so I'm assuming that we should have space within our agenda to get feedback from this body. As to what we would want to see and what they should be prepared to implement. Before they have to go before plan and zoning commission. And then have to redesign portions of the project, I mean, I I think it probably doesn't, it doesn't change whether or not they have approval for their project, but. You know, we would, we would have to under, it it would be nice for them to kind of understand, well, I've got to do a pedestrian bulb out at this corner. Or to to know whether or not we're going to request something different, but I feel like we're a little chicken and egging it a little bit. Because we don't have the complete streets plan and we don't have the right of way manual. So I feel like there's, there are documents that should guide our work that we need in order to effectively make decisions on some of these as well.
Yeah, for for, yeah, for a bigger standardized procedure, I guess, but it all depends on the traffic. I don't, i- it's not like one standard will fit all the standards. Because you have to be a little bit, like, for this kind of project where we know what kind of improvement fits the best on that roadway, there is no other like hundred options presented. And with the data collection analysis, countermeasures implemented, then it's true that this is the best we are coming up with. And this, this is, this will be constructed. But where there are projects where there is some kind of resistance from the public or there is some kind of if and but with. Fundings are involved, there are a lot of options to weigh the balance, that's where I would suggest, yeah, if I need go with, you know, with the complete street plan standard. Go with the, some kind of a backup document which is guiding you to follow, so you can fall back on. But with the, this Sturgis and Mill Plain, I don't need any kind of a backup or, you know. Kind of a, that kind of a guidance at all because the street, these intersections that are listed, they're screaming for help. You need crosswalks, you need proper ADA compliant ramps, uh, you need, definitely you need, pedestrians should feel comfortable walking. Bar Street and Mill Plain is a perfect example for that. Angua and Mill Plain where the island is sitting with all these overgrown hedges and nobody has place to refuge there. So these are, these are, these are like screaming, there's no brainer that we are debating that should, this require help or this shouldn't require help. There is no, you have to go there, you need to improve that, uh, and this is a scenario that this is the best scenario we're coming up with. And go from A to Z and and we'll implement, so this is why I'm saying, okay, let's stop it conceptual and and let's approve those. But where we are thinking about more of the factors, where you need a balancing act, where we need to think through, where a lot of people, a lot of, you know. Public involvement is it, then I agree, then you may have to have those kind of backups to fall back on, to support your ideas.
Where there's a lot of viable options.
Exactly, so these option, I don't think we need that kind of, you know, full fledged backups, like zoning manuals or storm manuals.
And that's the approach we've taken, kind of informally, if you will, with police. Um, if it made all, if it made sense without repeating everything she just said, conceptually, we're like, yeah, please run with it and do it. And on other things that had to get to sixty percent before you knew enough to give us the best option or the best two options. And to get the input, figure it out, vote on it, stuff like that, so.
It depends.
We just had to be flexible.
You have to be just flexible, that's a good word, I can't follow one thing and and then you have to see the timeline, these projects are already sixty days data collection. If we keep waiting, this project is not going to get over with all these approvals for two years, forget about this finishing in September twenty twenty five, this will finish in September twenty twenty seven. Have to go through, through this whole procedure, so we have to figure out that, you know, fast track projects, what projects we can finish that. So this is why I kept all these things in mind where we have to say conceptual, get approved conceptual, get rid of it, get implementation out of our table. And where we require like McKinley School is already taking two years, one year for the sidewalks.
So are you saying we have to weave some common sense into this?
Yes, we have to form flexibility and we have to be a little bit open about it, not like calling manuals, backup for manuals are good for backups. So this is how the Sturgis schedule is uh done and then I have public involvement and outreach, I have sit after conceptual design engineering. Will provide a notice to the public, which actually will be held with a fair field traffic authority, I will put it on the two week notice, they are more, you know, have, as we're coming along. So this is how these, this is how I'm filling all these information with our projects, all these projects will, are uploaded, most of, South Benson is another one, is another example. Similar situation, uh, you know, you know, the, you know, residents complain about it two, three times and we went out. Uh, project location, uh, project timeline is, this is. Uh, project location, uh, project timeline is, this is conceptual design in March twenty twenty five. Now, I haven't given a detail about it because what happening with this, uh, this South Benson roadway is that only three intersection on this. This little intersection and I think Riverside. No, no, sorry.
I don't know where to go. I'm in.
No, you're fine.
I don't know where I go.
This is a perfect example. We hired a Luke's consultant to do the survey for all the three thousand linear feet of this whole roadway from old post road. And, and until the end, this is, this is a guardhouse. This entrance is a guardhouse. Uh, entrance, we hired a surveyor, we did the survey, I provided my conceptual design. We had two public meetings already with the neighborhood. We presented them the conceptual design. They gave, gave us the feedbacks. I incorporated the feedbacks in the conceptual design. Uh, we have just hired the consultants to do, uh, to implement my conceptual design on the plan. Uh, probability, highly probability is that I will be doing the final design. I will not be putting on the consultants for this kind of a project. Once they, they do the, the conceptual will be sixty percent technically. So once they give me the sixty percent design of all this, uh, of this work. Uh, I will be giving the final design, uh, of the, of the plan. Uh, we are doing some bike lane markings with green color. Uh, on this roadway, we are repairing the sidewalks. We are installing new sidewalks, uh, at certain sections and we are improving. Old post road intersection, some curb bump outs and lining it, Riverside Drive will have a raised intersection. And this little elbow over here will also have a little improvements. We are not doing major improvement, but some kind of improvement, like crosswalk markings. Proper bike lane, uh, proper, uh, you know, segregation. Uh, I can show you the plans actually. I have uploaded my plans here. So if somebody wants to see, this is what we presented to the neighborhood in twenty twenty three. That, you know, improvements on investigation. This is what we presented to the neighborhood. We did in-house survey, medians to be considered, painted green by planes. Raised intersection at Riverside Drive. Uh, raised intersection or raised crosswalks to be considered at Riverside Drive. So we did, uh, you know. This elbow needs, like, you see these crosswalks here, we will be adding some crosswalk. We will be doing centerline hardening here on this and this to. Uh, to give more space to the pedestrians and, 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 and channelize the, uh, traffic. And then there is a guardhouse. Some installation of sidewalks to be considered on both. So this is where we have hired these consultants. They are investigating this installation of the sidewalk. There is some steep grading here, raised crosswalks. So this is a perfect example where we did the conceptual design in-house. Uh, we just have hired consultant to do certain, like, guardhouse entrance, installation of sidewalk at the steep area. And, and that's all technically they're doing. Uh, final design, I will be, we will be doing in-house for this project with, want to spend money on this one.
So is it currently no parking along that whole entire stretch?
Yeah, uh, there are certain sections with no parking on South Benson.
Okay. So is it then, I guess my question is, is it now no parking along the entire stretch to not conflict with bike lane?
It will conflict with bike lane.
Probably one of the biggest contentious issues that we are going to face as a board. In, in, in the construction of that project.
Yeah. Okay. I just wanted to clarify.
To park or not to park? That is the question.
Well said.
You can't have both.
Yeah, you can't have both.
You can't have both.
Yep.
Yeah.
I get it.
Areas where there's not much parking.
Yep.
Most of it, eighty percent of it's no parking, where you kind of, you know. Yeah. If there's business, if there's permit parking, then there are issues that are going to, we're going to have to decide.
Yep.
Which way the scale goes.
Yep.
This looks, this looks very exciting.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is, this is great.
Color markings and that's it. Nobody, we don't have green color marking bike lanes and everything.
Shot down last time it came up.
Yeah, well. They're expensive, but they're effective, so.
Greenback and.
Just ate them all on the same.
Here you go.
Tree planting schedule.
Still there, three weeks later. Is there a tree planting schedule as part of this? Is that something that's possible to consider?
Yeah, yes.
What was the question?
Tree planting, adding trees.
Yeah.
It's not part of my schedule. It's part of like when they're doing the construction sidewalks and if some tree has to come down, which will be a major issue, but.
Right, but, um, adding tree, and this is.
Yeah.
Advocacies in town, but, uh, it, it'd be helpful to consider tree planting. Um, as part of these projects because you're, you're going along the median and taking right away, so.
Yeah.
Tree planting or at least landscaping.
Landscaping maintenance.
It's depending on where it is.
Landscaping maintenance, like we had that drafted that.
Yeah. So this question's come up with flavors for us. Number one is when we take a tree out, the practice has sometimes been to replace a tree. I know it's informal. And then there's, do we need new trees or additional trees? And I think it's, it's kind of been a case by case.
We have, we have a draft, uh, text amendment on that.
You do?
Yes, yes.
Which we're going to get through, what, next week?
Well, let's hope, let's hope for summer. Let's try for summer.
It'll be in the spring because we're queued up.
Does it address new and replacement? I'm going to, so. We've, we've, we've bounced that ball around a few times and it's like, I.
We, we've been working with the forestry commission and so we get a lot of input, but.
Excellent.
So.
Thanks for doing that.
Important.
Yeah, it is.
So this is what project funding is. I'll put the numbers also and then contact. So this is how this whole web, the webpage has started looking like. I was putting a lot of details, ready road corridor study, similar issue here. overview, project limits, what kind of project, what intersections we will be improving. All these are listed. We have hired beta to do this work. Uh, to improve six intersections, uh, project timeline. Right now, the beta is not awarded the full design. They have only been awarded the survey. Or which is starting on Monday and finishing around August. So this will take a long time for this four, four mile of reading road to do the survey.
Why is the survey takes so long?
This one is because it's a four mile roadway that they are surveying.
And it's just, it's just the town survey crew.
No, 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 it's.
Oh, it's there.
Okay. We have hired the consultants.
Right now, a lot of.
For that long, yeah.
A lot of.
Miles.
Four mile stretch, four mile stretch.
It changes.
Right. There's involve, yeah, involves research. It's not like reading road is a simple fifty foot right of way. It's all leftover parcels and pieces. And the fact that right now, currently surveyors, if you were to get a hold of a surveyor, most of them are going to tell you, I won't even get to it until two months.
It's not the, it's the, it's not the actual work.
It's not the fieldwork.
Not the fieldwork, okay.
Right.
The fieldwork is right.
Yes.
But, yeah.
And then the other thing on, on all this here, uh, this is mega had put it in. This is not from the consultant. I just want to.
No, the consultant gave me the schedule. I just.
But you put it all in, though?
Yes, yeah.
It was a general, just a general question, so.
Yes, one, one quick reminder that we do have a million dollar grant.
Yes, and I have mentioned that we did receive.
For us here?
As I mentioned somewhere that we, I think it should go in the project funding. Yes, we did receive one million dollar. Grant for this project, uh, as part of state bonding money.
Eric, yeah.
From Sarah Kit. So this is why we are waiting for the grant and this is why we just started with surveying task so they can start determining the pathways. This is one of the, of walking pathway in a meanwhile until that grant we fully receive and then we will award the design to beta. So this is why we are stopping at this, uh, August and then we will, conceptual design will be based on the pathways that we will be putting. And then I will update the schedule that when we are going to have a public meeting and we will start informing the public. So that's not coming sooner, September, um, you know.
Interesting time. Are all of these on the website right now?
Yes.
The, the last couple haven't been uploaded yet.
Yeah, only few I have to work on, uh, last ones. Uh, just still revising the warnings and stuff what I started. Now, this is a good reading order. I have to fill ready order about, uh, on this. Now, this is a perfect example that, uh, Kevin, you brought it up, like the smaller project. Uh, you know, where we just have this little island. This is very hard to see, like, this is like a splitter island, these big shot and Chester. This is like a smaller project. People couldn't cross this roadway at all. These are not compliant ADA ramps right now. So what I did was I, this is almost like forty-two feet wide roadway from curb to curb. What I did was, and here on street parking here, two parking, so we should take these two, from these three parking spaces. And it converted into the right turn lane, like a little channelized island. And, and what happened is making exclusive right for right turning people and, and straight through traffic so that, you know, these pedestrians, they can see the pedestrians and they are able to cross. Uh, across this, uh, across this roadway. And we are putting some curve extension here. We have wood room and we are putting some curve extension. Remember we, when we went out, there was a sideline issue. So what was, we will extend this curve here to eliminate that sideline issue. So this is similar example where we went out and it's obvious reason that you need an improvement. You know, like, there is no crosswalks, there is no ADA and people are having hard time passing this roadway.
Relatively straightforward.
Yes, relatively straightforward and not time consuming. I have a historic commission meeting on thirteenth of March. I have submitted them the plans yesterday. Uh, to get the feedback.
Can we just take a quick peek at, uh, Woods and Stilson? I know that's very, very early stage, but.
Stilson and Wood, I haven't uploaded much of their pictures. I'm going to upload that information because. But Fairfield Stilson, uh, being around a bit, they will take place in spring twenty twenty five, which is April coming and I have to fill that in.
Okay, okay.
I was, I just asked because it was on the list. Okay, I think you've gotten through the list, I believe, right?
Yes, yes, a lot of them.
Yeah, that's a lot of stuff. Thank you.
So we are making it more interactive, more detailed. Schedules will be all online. So nobody is blindsided and wondering, well, what happened to McKinley? What happened to my Mill Plain?
If I may, I don't know if, now, this is not on the agenda. So that's where I'm asking people who are familiar with this. When we were talking about the quote, quick hits or whatever, there is a request, uh, for Stratfield Road. There's a crosswalk there and all the, uh. Uh, the neighborhood we just watched is a mid-block or a in-street pedestrian crossing. Uh, at Lubane Street Bond and Stratfield Road. So again, that might be one of those where I don't think we need to do the whole.
Just a little snatch of thing in the middle of the road.
Right.
That's a crosswalk there, right?
So again, that's.
Sandwich side?
Yeah, basically the sandwich board side. And, and the key thing there is though, you would have to agree to maintain it so that you'd have to check with them.
How about OSTA?
Uh, that, that's, that would be, it would state, the OT three gave us the list and one of them was approval by the LTA. So that's why. You know, so that's why, so on this one, I would think then we vet it out and then we would present it next month's.
Yeah, we could probably vote on that next, on Thursday of March.
Exactly, that's, that would be a quick hit, exactly.
Easy kind of set.
Okay.
So could you just walk through the steps with the state road?
Um, what I do, I mean, the, the interest, uh.
You know, thumbnail, what's the thumbnail of state road?
For thumbnail, with a, with a state road is usually you, you can make a request, uh, to them, uh, from, on behalf of the town. And or sometimes a, um, concerned citizen will, will do that and most ninety-nine percent of time, it will get sent back and say, you must go through the legal traffic authority. Before you, before, and, and concurrence with the town before they consider it. Because what they don't want is, like we were talking about before, side conversate or people, you know, just.
How hard is it to get something like that through the state?
Well, for this one in particular, uh, I had talked to the, the engineer, uh, and again, just, just what you were saying before, kind of a little conceptual or a quick preliminary. He said, well, this is what you would need. We have that, so we'll present that. And then one of the things, item number two was.
They're, they're amenable to it.
Uh, yes, for this one.
Excellent, okay. Thanks. That's what I was looking for.
Yeah, and we had a pilot program with Mill Plain Road and there were a couple of other ones as well. And they didn't get hit every day. So that was, when there were barrels way back when, it was a pain in the neck. But the weighted sandwich board signs now, uh, have, you know, every once in a while, they will get hit or they'll, they'll move on you. But for the most part, they stay still as opposed to the older version.
It's in the middle of the road.
Go right in the middle of the road. They actually, actually.
Anything outside item six? I think you covered item six and item seven, but unless there's anything else on the website you want to show us.
I just have one quick question. Sorry. The form you created on the website, does that also like tie in with the queue alert system?
No.
It's like, are people still going to submit? Under there?
Queue alert is only for traffic signals and not for, and.
Okay, so those, so those don't exist?
They don't exist in the service.
Like those categories?
Like blinking traffic signals or it is sometimes a sidewalk repairs.
No, enforcement.
Yeah.
Pretty, pretty much.
Yeah.
It's, it's kind of a replica of what you have here.
That's a good question. Should I?
I just wonder from your standpoint, it's like trying to manage it. Do you want them all that's the same?
Yeah, we had talked about that.
It did. I wanted to eliminate queue alert for just the traffic stuff, to be honest.
Traffic calming?
Traffic. No, any traffic related complaints because that way I want to direct public to one traffic, you know.
Yeah.
And, and direct there from people.
So maybe, uh. Maybe for traffic complaints in the queue alert system, we feed them to.
Feeds it to that.
Yeah.
The survey request form. I recommend that because.
We will have to change some of our, it's, it's fine. I, I just have to think through and I'll get with my guys and work, we'll work on how we're gonna. Because that's, the queue alert is automated.
Yes.
And that goes right down to the traffic officer. So when they see something in the queue alert, they. They act on those things.
Right.
Um. Is there a way?
It's okay. I'm not sure, yeah.
Is there a way to, I mean, I don't know. Is there a way to integrate it with this?
Well, let me have a conversation with them and then maybe.
It was just a thought.
No, no, it's a great.
I don't want to micromanage like.
I'll have a conversation with them and then I will see if, uh, Dave Kelly has some, you know, magical pixie dust he can sprinkle on it to make, and make it over.
I asked him, but he said we cannot integrate. It has to be one.
Well, that, that aside, in a perfect world, what's the solution that we think makes most sense? Do we want one talking to the other, one feeding to the other, or I, I just don't know.
I don't even want to weigh in on it until I talk to my team.
Yeah.
I just sit in an office.
I just asked the question.
You know, I really want to get.
Involved in how you manage the.
They may say to me, get rid of the queue alert. We will go to this every day and come up with our target areas.
But the supervisor. That was kind of my question, because if my complaint is speeding down Steiner Street, am I going to queue? Am I going to here?
Yep.
That's why I asked the question.
Yeah.
Right.
Or, or am I going to both? So I, I don't want to weigh in yet.
Okay.
And, and maybe that could be an agenda item or even just a conversation that, that we can have offline and then direct, um, IT to, to make those, whatever changes we decide on, if any.
Do you know whether you respond through this system? Queue alert, you can respond.
Got to sit at the table.
Can you respond to this? Is that, I can't answer that.
Oh, no, you could ask a question.
Absolutely.
You're a member of the public.
Question, um, queue alert allows you to, allows people who are getting the questions to respond to the, um, resident if they create an account and log in. I don't know if this sound, this to me is just an email. So I don't know if there's any tracking or logging associated with it. My question.
Separate and apart, let's look at it from a DPW perspective. Someone has, someone, a DUI knocks down a stop sign. Our dispatchers will go in and submit a queue alert to DPW to replace that stop sign. DPW will acknowledge it, replace it. And then acknowledge back to dispatch or the police department that it was all done. Um, so there's this like perfect.
And then the res, and then the resident also finds that out.
Exactly, exactly what I was going to say, because I get all of those queue alerts, so I see them.
So that's all internal?
Yeah.
I thought citizens could go to queue.
They can, they can, and they, they get receipts.
Okay.
They get, and, and also I think an important part of it is if it's not. So they, they get receipts. They get, and, and also I think an important part of it is if it's not responded to by my staff. It, it gets escalated to the department head and then escalated to the director if, so if it's not responded to. Yeah.
And there's, 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 there's two systems though, because in Stanford, because I, I forwarded you the Stanford project request form. Stanford, Norwalk and New Haven all have the same form because they had the same consultant. The Norwalk one is the newest one. And I sent you the newest, newest one, because I took Norwalks and I revised it. So that's more for projects. What you're talking about is a work order system.
Yeah.
So there's two different things. It against a citizen complaint slash, but it's. Yeah, but what, what, the system, we, the system we should. Focus on is really the project system, not so much the down stop signs.
Yeah.
And that's, that's the, you, you know which form I'm talking about, right? Yeah, so I sent you a copy. And the complete streets one? Yeah, yeah, I sent you a copy of the, the complete streets manual form that has more information in it, but that's not. Like what you're talking about is a work order system. It, it, and it's hard, because you've got, you open a ticket, somebody responds to it, you close it, you respond. What we're talking about is more of a.
Traffic calming projects, like good projects.
It's actually referred to as a citizen service request.
But I'm just, as an IT guy, and somebody did real estate facilities, it's a work, work order system, the way it's set up. Cause there's a queue prioritization, you know, is it something on fire? Is it a leaky pipe, you know? This, what we're talking about is really more of a project initiation system that's in a, and, and you, you. You guys need to talk about how you use yours.
I saw that on the website. It's, yes, it's a traffic calming project, like where you live.
We don't get a ton through that form. That's all through our, similar system queue alert. We have a citizen.
That's on the, that's on the public's most familiar way.
They all come through there under traffic.
For work orders, hundred percent, there's a pothole over here, please come and fill it. But they will also submit these types of requests. Sightline issues or we want a stop sign.
Crosswalk.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's gonna be some.
So it could be an educational thing that we do.
Sure. Well, and all the, if. All those categories that are on that form don't exist in the queue alert system. But you guys are. That are more like work order related, can you have them added?
So one option.
Once again, I'm just throwing out ideas. I don't want to direct.
It's, it's definitely a thing through either you separate the system, like make it just traffic calming projects oriented, like submit a form request.
It's probably a different set of questions though, because it, it's, it just is an IT person. So basically you routed to say a stop sign's down. And then the tree says, there's four things you could talk about. Where is it? You know, is it totally down, you know? Whatever, did you see the person who dialed it? I don't know, some questions, there are like four questions. Our projects are gonna be like more qualitative. I, I need a crosswalk because, you know, so there's, it's a different branch of questions.
I think those lines are gonna blur more than you might think. I really do. Just from the citizens knowing what to do and how to do it and what the two options are. I don't disagree with your technical explanation, but I think on a practical level, we need to think about this.
And, and that, and you're saying from, from my perspective, from an IT perspective, we have to think, you know. Let's just say third, third grade level.
Is it on fire? Is it on fire? Is it on fire?
Generous.
There, there's a, there's an expectation that they can go to a place and, and find what they want. And if, and if it's not the right place, they're gonna put that message in that place.
Right.
And then, and then it's gonna be up to us to decipher, push that in the direction it needs to be.
But just to, you know, is it an urgent, urgent matter, then that gets simplified and prioritized. Is it, you know, short, medium, long term? A lot of things we're talking about in this meeting are really longer term. And so the longer term will have more qualitative questions you answer. Short term, you know, is the traffic signal out, right? Like, we gotta fix that right away. So, so it's a, it's a, there's a hierarchy of.
It's right now, we have two separate systems, a queue alert with a short term and this system which is more NPM and long term.
Unless there's a way to reference on the queue alert, if there's a traffic calming problem.
Yeah.
All you can do are provide a link.
You see, you, you don't get a lot of questions. You're a bigger city. No, we get a lot, we get a ton through our. It's called Fix It Stanford. We get a ton through there. We don't get a lot submitted through that project form that's in our Complete Streets manual. Most of it comes through the citizen service system as a traffic calming request. And then sometimes that turns into a project.
But you guys also have a, a commission like this that the town is learning about and getting to know about. And starting to utilize and.
You have a really good. Yeah. Who, who runs that? But your program's great.
My department.
Your department's great at it. I mean, they, they, these guys are some of the best in the state, you know, if not the region.
They have their own signals. They own the signals. They're not the state, uh, not the, right? Even they have the.
Of staff.
All right. All right, so I think, is everyone good on item six and seven and personal comments? I think we're good. Um, item eight here discussed important timelines. Did you have anything specific under that topic?
I did the audio too, yeah, yeah.
You covered it?
Yes.
We kind of covered it with the discussion of when.
Again, just to highlight, the timeline would be if you want to be on the March agenda, you need the information two weeks in advance. So there's the timeline. You need to submit something.
I have submitted everything by second of March, but twentieth of March meeting. So technically whatever I have received from police department. I have to sift through and make sure this doesn't have to go for wording or it needs to go for another.
So then will we get a package before the meeting?
Yes.
Yeah, and then that way we have time to look at it before.
Again, I am giving two weeks, so everybody is comfortable, right? And they have good time to digest it. That's why two weeks is.
Wait, we, other than, you got a comment from anybody else? That's Mike.
Sorry, I'm, I was appointed as an alternate or a, a fill-in for you guys, so thought I'd say hello. The, um, the meeting schedule on Thursday's afternoon, a third Thursday is directly in conflict to my board of directors meeting. So I'm doing them both at the same time, but I just wanted to say hello and hopefully I'll be out of this position by the middle of summer and be able to attend the meetings. And participate more. So with that, I'll, I'll just say, good night.
I didn't know you owned a tie.
What's that? Is that Gerber? Yeah, I got a tie. Put it on for you, Bill.
Well, you look great.
Thank you. Just want to say.
Okay, so other, other things on the timeline, since we are looking at having information two weeks ahead of the meeting. Other than the thing that might come from Bill, that we talked about a few moments back, is there anything else that we anticipate as being a voting item? That, anything in the pipeline we know about?
Some crosswalks, recommendation that was forwarded to me just yesterday from the police department. So I have to look, so that could be another voting. It's just a crosswalk. It's nothing like, or somebody's, doesn't.
I mean, so if there's any low hanging fruit that we can knock off in your early stages before we get into the more meatier things, certainly I think that might be a good idea.
Look for quick.
Bring anything forward you have that, that falls into that, you know, semi-easy category. All right, anything else on timeline? If not, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. All those in favor?